Okay, alright, so we'll be turning back to our regional school committee meeting. And the first item on the agenda is action on the minutes of our open meeting of June 20th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
I would move to accept the minutes of the open meeting of June 20th, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Dan. Do we have any discussion, changes, anything? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor of accepting minutes? Okay, that's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is educational policy for the approval of the Algonquin Writing Center's overnight field trip to Secondary School Writing Centers Association Conference in Washington DC on November 8th through the 10th of 2018.
So moved.
So moved, by Dan, seconded by Paul. Potka, and any discussion, question?
I don't remember, is this a new one? Is this kind of a new trip, or what do we do every single year?
We've approved this before.
Yes, we do it every year.
And the students pay for it? It says funds come out of their personal funds, it's not out of the school budget?
They fundraise for it, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this is the second year, Writing Center really took hold last year, so it's probably the second or the third year, yeah.
I remember it last year, I was here.
Yeah. It's this tremendous program that we started, and so, and I didn't even know they had such an association, so it's good. It's always good for the kids to get and learn from what other schools are doing, so. Okay, so, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the trip? That's unanimous. New business, back to school update.
Yes, it seems like we've been back to school, so when the regional school committee meeting rolls around, we've already been in session for what seems like a lot longer than a month, but we haven't. And so tonight, we have everyone on deck to share their remarks about how well the beginning of the school year has gone, from central office to the entire, I haven't seen you all together in a while, the entire Algonquin administrative team is here as well. And I think we're gonna just do a quick snapshot of how the school year began. Deb and Erica are also here as well. And Andy's and Julie are in the audience. We're saving you for bring your own device, right? Okay.
Okay, start? Okay. For students-
Start time.
Start time? No. For student support services and our district, our school year does not end in June, so our summer was again bustling with activity for our Algonquin students, and they continued their academic and social learning during our extended school year programming. We serviced 27 students ranging in ages from 14 to 22 years old, and we offered five programs at this school. In order to do that, our principal and custodians were again so helpful in maintaining a beautiful learning environment for our students and staff over the summer, as they readied the schools for the fall, and we're very thankful for their support. We held the second annual transportation meeting with Vanpool and Assabit Valley Collaborative at the end of last year for parents who were new or returning to van transportation, and it proved to be very helpful and a good informational session. We will continue with this practice for next summer's parents. They've requested this, and it seems to have gone really well, so we're not going to mess with success. Our assistant directors, Deb Lemieux and Erica Edstrom and I, traveled the district here during the first few days of school, and visited the programs at the high school. And these programs provide the necessary supports for students who experience success in their learning. Students were all busily engaged in activities to start the new school year. It's been a wonderful start, as was evident from our visits to the school, and our teams are energized as they prepare and begin the new school year. Thank you.
So this summer, we had our English learners. In August, our high school students are invited to come to a three-week program. It is hosted at Z-School because we bring together all our English learners from grades one to 12. This year, we had 10 English learners proficiency levels one through low four join us, and the theme that we chose this year, so that everybody could work on the same theme, was financial literacy. We chose it for the high school particularly, and made it developmentally appropriate for all our students, but the high school really focused on the concept of entrepreneurship, the vocabulary that they'll need when they do business here at the high school. They researched the entrepreneurs, both past and present, their lives, their traits, researched what it took to have a good, to have a successful business. They did market research when the lower grades joined the program, and then designed their products and goods, and took a look at what would make it successful, because the culminating project was Market Day, and the high school students offered their goods and services to the younger students, because their focus was money and handling currency. And that was the test to whether what they had decided to choose as a product, they actually made their product, and they had to buy and calculate the margins, the profit that they could make. So the last day was Market Day, so it was bringing alive a real-life concept to them. They learned an immense amount of vocabulary. We included all different listening, speaking, reading, and writing in all, everything that they did every day, and the response that they gave back, the surveys were absolutely amazing. So, we're very pleased with that program, and since then, we've had a great start to the school year with new students joining Algonquin the first day of school. So thank you for the opportunity for sharing.
Well, as is the norm, every summer is the busiest season in human resources in a school district. Dr. Walsh and I spent a lot of quality time on the phone over the summer. We did bring on 16 new staff members at the regional level. Those openings occurred either due to resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, or transfers into new positions. So we greeted all of our new staff members, at least our new teachers, here at New Teacher Orientation Day, that was held here in the library, and it was a great success. We, in human resources, over the past year, we have really been looking at our systems and trying to streamline things. We have been using Infinite Visions to be more of a tracking tool for us, and to eliminate some of the dupla- duplicate, I can't talk right now, some of the processes that are duplicative, thank you. The, this summer, we also hosted a training with Infinite Visions to bring up our accounts receivable module. That is something that we had been looking to do, so that we were able to integrate and again use one system, as opposed to having multiple systems in the finance office. And at the same time, we also brought them back for a tutorial on the web portal, which we hope to be rolling out to all staff members at the beginning of the calendar year. The web portal will enable employees to see their pay stubs, obtain their W-2 forms, and make any changes, like to direct deposit, to addresses, and things like that, so it will give them greater access, and also to their personal time and sick leave as well. Finally, all of our staff members completed annual mandatory trainings that are required by the district and also by the state on the first two days that they reported back. That included the state's conflict of interest training, and then also the district's annual mandatory training. I have been working with French River Collaborative, and this is a piggyback to the earlier discussion that was held about the sheltered English immersion endorsement, and it is looking as though we are going to be offering, or at least hosting, a course here at, within the district for our educators who have not obtained that endorsement yet, and we are looking at a start time of potentially the end of January, beginning of February, and that will go until about mid-May. So, as Mrs. Frank said, that is a long class.
Long end.
And then finally, I am also working with our insurance carrier, AIA, so that we can offer additional trainings for our administrative team, for the district's administrative team. And so that's where we stand in human resources as of right now. We're starting to settle down and see the bottom of my desk finally, but it was a successful summer.
I'll let Sarah introduce her crew.
Oh, sorry. Good evening. Quick recovery. So I, first of all, I just want to thank and appreciate the support that we get at Algonquin, as Superintendent Johnson said, she's seeing the administrative team here together. It is a true opportunity for me to have the opportunity to work with such a diverse group. Each of us brings a unique strength for our students, and really helps to grow our student body and support our educators, and supporting our students as well. And that doesn't just happen, that happens because of the support that school committee gives us, the community gives us, and central office gives us, so thank you for that. I'd like to welcome our newest administrator, I am gonna try really hard on your title. Sorry, Marie. I might do a little cheat sheet here. So we had the opportunity to have Andrea Cameron join us as our special education administrator of program and services.
Yes.
Andrea comes to us with a wealth of knowledge. She has worked in Massachusetts in a previous large district within special education services, and has really brought a refreshing perspective and a great collaborative, unique style with Marie and the other support services at district office to kind of look at some of the services that we're doing, streamline our work, and better meet our student needs, because that's the purpose of the work that we do. So welcome Andrea, thank you for being here. Michelle Tantanato is looking towards an exciting and fun and eventful year as she loops down from the senior class to join the freshman class, and she is gonna continue to loop with them for the next four years because of the benefits of looping and creating positive connections with students. So she brings that veteranship that she's had in helping classes go all the way through Algonquin, and then coming back down to continue to grow for the freshmen. Tim McDonald has moved up in looping with the sophomores to continue his work. Andy has taken over the senior class and some of the juniors, so he'll now be venturing in helping his T-Hawks graduate, which is really exciting. Athletic Director Moserino, whom we met at the end of last year, really excited to have him join the team, can't wait for his athletic reports. Really fun events going on there. And then we have Mr. Mike Gorman, head of facilities, and as always, Algonquin looks gorgeous and beautiful, and we had a wonderful opening because of the work of the custodial team over the summer.
Is that a wrap, Sarah?
I think so, I think that was enough, right?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Are we ready for athletics?
I'm ready for athletics.
Welcome back, everybody, I hope everyone had a great summer. We're a little bit, we're three weeks into our season, it's been an exciting time of year. It's wonderful to see the campus filled with activities. We have a little over 500 student athletes participating on 21 different teams, so the gyms and the fields are, you know, busy every single day. You know, our teams have shown growth in athletics this year, which tells us that our athletes want to be involved and represent T-Hawk pride, which, you know, was instilled last year with passion, respect, initiative, dedication, and excellence. So, put that all over our athletes' t-shirts through Athletic Council, and I can get into Athletic Council in a little while, but we have seven new coaches this year in the fall, and we have, of those seven coaches, we have two teachers, so, that are inside the building. So we all know that that is, you know, truly important when building connection with our athletes. We have three new positions that were funded this year, newly funded this year, which is assistant coach Unified Basketball, assistant coach for boys varsity soccer, and an assistant coach for girls varsity soccer. So three new positions that were now available to us to help out with our student athletes on those individual teams. Athletic Council, which is a part, which is through the athletic department, we are up and running, we've met three times this month, and usually we only meet once a month, but we've wanted to get it going early this year. You know, this Athletic Council continues to empower our student athletes while feeling invested in the athletic department. Through the Athletic Council, we have many subcommittees that our students take part in, which is Policy Hall of Fame, Community Service Leadership, Gate Management, and some events that we've talked to that we have in motion that are coming up in the future. We have marching in this South Rose Heritage Day Parade, which we're looking forward to, that's something new. We are working with the basketball for a kids' night out on October 27th, and we are going to look into reading for the elementary school students at Beasley School between our seasons, October, usually in the middle of November, so the kids can take advantage of that. 14 to 18 students, athletes are gonna participate in that. Our Tomahawk of the Month, which is a certificate was handed out at the beginning of October, will be handed out at the beginning of October for the month of September, and this goes to a male and female athlete that voted on by the coaches and the teammates. This award recognizes outstanding student athletes for their demonstration of leadership, teamwork, sportsmanship, and excellence on and off the field. Code Tomahawk, which is an initiative to get people to attend other team sporting events, is helping keep up attendance at athletic events while promoting a sense of camaraderie between the teams. We will be extending beyond the athletic field and the courts, and into the fine arts department, and giving our athletes an opportunity to participate in finance. And our first show is going to take place on October 24th, which is the Fall Course Concert, so we're hoping that a lot of athletes will go and attend, and will be all be at a show of support beyond athletics. October also kicks off leadership training opportunities through the year for our ambassadors program. We have three ambassadors, Lucy Govin, Nick Alcock, and Mia McCullough. We're hoping to attend two leadership conferences throughout the year, one of which is at Gillette Stadium, and the kids have done that in years past, and they thought it was a great opportunity, they want to continue that. Within the first week of school, Athletic Council also worked to bring the boys home. I don't know if some of you saw that initiative, our football team, five years ago, moved to cross the field where they, and we wanted to bring them home. We thought it would be a good idea to bring them home, so they could play in front of the home crowd, and they could feed off of it. And, you know, we see that amongst other schools where the teams are lined up, and I know with being a graduate here, with the team where they were, I think is where they should be, and I think the kids loved it. We've had a big turnout for our first two games, we had between 600 and 700 students attend our first two home games, and they saw a big victory for the first game of the year, which our football team won 32 to nothing. Unfortunately, they had a couple tough losses the last couple games, but they're gonna keep working. Our Captain's Breakfast, last initiative through Athletic Council, which is sponsored by our Booster Club, will take place on October 17th, and this is for all of our team captains, fall team captains, that will focus on leadership and identifying the role of captaincy. Unified Program ARHS was nationally recognized, extremely, extremely proud, and an outstanding accomplishment. Officially announced as one of the national banner schools for Special Olympics, which is, we were one of 10 schools in Massachusetts to get recognized, and we are one of 131 schools nationally. This is basically, it is a recognition of our student athletes, coaches, and administrations' commitment to inclusive sports, and we will continue to trend, to continue to grow. I would like to recognize Kevin Hausman, Spishagaius, and Ken McDonald, who are our coaches for our track and Unified Basketball programs. Weight room additions, we purchased four new treadmills for our weight room, and our student athletes, special education, and physical education departments all have the ability to use these. State-of-the-art equipment, and the vision is to continue to improve our weight room and give the best equipment for our students to utilize throughout the year. Sports results, real quickly, again, weather has kind of played a role into the beginning of the season, we're three weeks in, we're about, one team is probably, has about five or six games done, but our boys soccer opened up with big victories against Groton Dunstable and St. John's, they're 4-2 and 1. Girls soccer has 1-0 and 2, they've cancellations due to weather twice. Field hockey has an overall record of 5-0 and 1, with huge wins against Quabbin, Westboro, Pittsburgh, and Leominster. Volleyball swept all three levels, JV1, JV2, and varsity swept Marlboro at the beginning of the year, and also beaten Neshoba in Shepherd Hill, and have an overall record of 4-2. Golf is 3-1, big wins over Westboro. Cross country, big win against Wachusett, and finished fifth out of 23 teams in the Amherst Invitational. And our cross-country team, boys team, is 0-1, but also finished 13th out of 23 teams in the Amherst Invitational. For our cross-country teams, they not only take place in regular league matches, but they also take place in invitationals too. I would like to thank the Booster Club for their continued support and dedication to our athletes, boosters, and athletics, we continue to work together. We had our Booster Club, annual Booster Club golf tournament that took place on, was supposed to take place August 22nd, got rained out. We had close to 90 people signed up for that, and I think there's just plenty of ceiling there for it to continue to grow. So we had to move it to a different date, and still 75 people showed up, which was great. Sometimes that's not always the case with people's schedules, and the people participating in this is coaches, administration, faculty, staff, community members, and alumni. And finally, a special thanks to all those who make it possible, Superintendent Johnson, central office, Principal Walsh, and the administration team at the high school facilities for working hard, Mike, for working hard and preparing our student athletes to have beautiful facilities outside, and John Driscoll, athletic trainer, a superb coaching staff, Susan B. Burns, an amazing administrative assistant, and our truly outstanding student athletes. So, even though we're three weeks in, it's going fast, and before we know it, we'll be tournament time, and we'll be looking into winter season, so I don't want to wish the fall away, but it's been a great start, been an absolute great start.
Thank you, Mike, for that.
Yep.
Update, that was, I really loved how the student athletes are getting involved, both seeing each other's sports play, which, you know, we started to do, and also going to see the fine arts performances and seeing other students, and just bringing everyone all together in one, and really supporting each other is a great message. And I loved hearing about the involvement in the community, the reading program, and, you know, it's great, it's just not on the sports, but they're leaders in the community. Any other? Kathleen?
I was wondering if also this is a school culture that the fine arts students are going to sporting events and being guided to also share in that, and just wondering, since I'm new, why the fine arts aren't presenting this evening, or are they, and I'm just not seeing it or knowing that?
So we have a schedule of department chair presentations. So they're on the schedule for this year, and we have usually about four or five departments present, and that is the presentation of the evening. So they are scheduled along with world language, I think, math, it's in the packet, the four that are scheduled to present.
But they're not a part of the leadership? Is this an upper administrative?
Right, this is the central administration at the, the administrative team, each department has their own department chair, so they will have their own special night to present, as opposed to being part of the, how did the year begin? So they'll be sharing lots more about their department through their presentation this year.
And then to follow up on the second part of the question, our pet band goes to all of the home football games, so they're already part of the athletics, as well as the basketball games. But Mike and I really work together on how do we expand at the Algonquin's walls, and some of the ideas that we came up with are if our pet band is marching in our local parades, Athletic Council should be there too. And so Mike is really working on having Athletic Council be at the Heritage Day Parade. Just keep it going, keep it growing.
Joe?
A question for Mike. One thing that we always prided ourselves on are the intermurals. Do you know, I mean, you talked about, you know, the 21 teams and 500 athletes, but there are also those athletes that just don't make it, and that they have something else to fall back, and the intermurals was a very strong part of that. When will the intermurals be starting up, any idea?
We have an intermurals program that starts up in the wintertime, it's run through the Northwood Recreation Department, and it's basketball, it's run on Sunday nights for opportunities for kids who may not have the ability to make the basketball team, or, but they have another opportunity to play basketball, that's our recreation. There's also other clubs and activities that are presented throughout the year, but in regards to intermurals, we have a basketball program that would start in the wintertime.
We also have, for example, Badminton Club, some of the clubs that students necessarily don't want to be a track runner or a football player, so when they go to our activity extravaganza, there's some forms of athletic clubs that kids get involved, less stressful, more fun, play to have fun.
And a follow-up?
Yep.
Also, how do I point out my mind? I must have, old age.
Want me to ask one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Fine.
Yeah.
Great report, thrilled to have you on board. Outstanding move, whether it was you or someone else, to bring the football team back to the home side of the field. That is incredibly welcomed, very well done. And I was at the school late this afternoon, and it took a little time getting out of here because there were, it seemed like hundreds of cross-country kids coming back from there, probably 26.2 mile run.
Yep.
So, anyway, it's great to see that number of kids participating in athletics here. Anyway, well done.
Thank you.
I came back.
All right.
Ma'am, I'd like to also commend you on keeping the shining stars of the athletics that we've had, you know, the Athletic Council having the T-Hawk awards, I think those were always very vital parts for the kids, and also vital for you to get the feedback from the kids through the Athletic Council, so I applaud you on doing that. And to the superintendent, I know that in the years past, we always had like athletic updates. Will we be hearing from Mike again, like at the end of the fall season or before winter? I mean, what can we, what was your goal in giving updates back to us?
My goal is to be consistent, and what we had in the past was, actually, we sort of, with Fran's rebirth, I think, recovery, or whatever it was, we had Fran twice last year. Part of the other thing that we added in the agenda is to have the boosters present, and it was a decision not to have them present at the first meeting, because we really have just started to have conversations with them. Mike, I know, has been to a number of booster meetings already. Tom Spataro has reached out to me, indicating that they are still interested in exploring the turf conversation, and Sarah and Mike and myself, and Mike, Mike and Mike, met this week, I think it was this week, to talk about some strategies going forward with the booster organization. So, we've traditionally had the AD, depending who it was, present at every season turn, and I would anticipate a winter-
Yep.
-wrapping up fall, launching winter, and then a end of the year, which would be a summary of the spring sports.
One alibi for me. So, part of, I think, one of the greatest things that you can bring in the program, I've seen how you coach, and I've seen, you know, how good you are with the student athletes, I see how they respect you, and I think it's great if you can, you know, just continue to impart that on all of our coaching staff, on how to win with grace and how to lose with grace as well. Being respectful of their opponent, of your opponent, and your teammates and your opponents as well. I think, you know, that, I've seen ugliness in athletics, I've seen it in stands, which is, I hope to never see again, and fortunately, it's rare, but when it happens, it has to be stomped out, and, but to the student athletes, you know, to continue to please impart, you know, that on the coaching staff, on, you know, being respectful and winning with class and losing with class.
Thank you.
Okay, Andy?
I have one last question for Rona. Ma'am? Talking about your financial literacy program that you had, so I think that's great to keep up the education and to supplant what they do during, you know, the year. So I was just wondering, on that financial literacy, was the money, was that attained through a grant, or is that from the budget that we have for the year?
To run the summer program for English learners, is it actually coming, it was funded out of Title III, which is a supplemental grant for English learners, which allows us to have a summer program for our students.
Okay, so we've had that program.
So it funded it completely, yes.
Okay, great. Because it sounds similar to a Title I program, but I knew it wasn't Title I, because working in one of those in the summertime, but that's a Title III program.
Yes.
Thank you for applying for those grants, and for the business department getting that, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, moving on to the next agenda item, we have the superintendent's report to the committee. I think we'll just keep it on the other side of the aisle here.
So I would love to steal a show of my principal report, if appropriate, I'd like Mr. Gorman to first give his update on some of the work that they did over the summer to prepare Algonquin for the excellent opening that it had.
Thank you for the opportunity to update, and school committee for, on the facilities, the role of facility department here at Algonquin basically is to maintain and create the best learning environment that we can, and doing it in a cost-effective manner. So that's key and important to the public, we work forward to, how we do that greatly impacts how the student learns. It basically creates the morale. So, how we do our job affects the morale of the staff, everybody likes to come into a well-maintained facility, and I think that's key to walking into a building and having a good presentation, and continuing giving the students every opportunity- and continuing on, giving the students every opportunity for a world-class learning environment. We're fortunate to have an outstanding facility department. I can't say enough about my team. They're unbelievable. They basically take pride in their work. They take ownership of it. And they continuously, from the day the school ended in June to we started back up this fall, we continue on overcoming challenges. And basically, they knocked it out of the pack because they were on time, on budget. They did a great job. And it gave everybody a great start to get going. You know, it's kind of hard to believe, but over twelve years ago, we renovated the school. And looking at that, and the school still looks great. It's owed to all the hard work that they do. And it's always been a place. To run a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot building of thirty-five acres, there's a lot to do behind the scenes. And to do it seamlessly is our goal, to make it so the teachers can do their jobs. It's really important. And it's critical to have programs in place, like preventative maintenance and things like that, to stay on top of the aging of the building. Twelve years into it, you know, you start to hit that point. But overall, we're going to continue on that with the pride of the team. Our sports basically outside run well on their way and over the summer. Basically, we continue to work on for the challenges of the weather and stuff. And where, and where A.D. Mike has been awesome. I mean, we can't say enough to work out there. And we're excited about it because we're going to continue on trying to better the facilities and the sports going down the road. Capital budgets and things like that. We have some things in the works, but basically, I hope to update everybody in the future on that. It's still too soon for some of the capital budget things, but we are looking at that. We continue to take advantage of whatever we can. If there's opportunities from National Grid in programs or savings, if there's Meyer that has a grant for ten thousand dollars, we did put in for those. We have high hopes for it. We hope to come back and notify everybody that it's been, you know, accepted, and we'll be excited to get that ten thousand dollar grant. Eight years ago, we started an energy initiative in the school. We've been building off that for eight years. And we had the vision then, and we continue on with that vision now. But we're set in a real good position because the savings that we're doing, that we planted eight years ago, are yielding big time in our budgets. Maybe it doesn't see it or understand it. But the energy that we save, every dollar that we save, is basically not going down the drain, but taken from our scarce budget money. So it's important that we continue on that, and basically, we will. And like I say, we just continue to be a good steward of the school, to maintain it, so our staff can basically have the best possible ability to do their jobs. But I can't say enough about my team. They're awesome.
Thanks, Mike. So I will dive into my principal report. Wonderful opening for Algonquin. Such an amazing opportunity to have to be a part of T-Hawk Nation. I, my whole family marched with the ARHS pep band. Let me correct that. My husband pulled the wagon with my children in it, and we picked up some children on the way, which was kind of powerful. It was a hot day. I didn't offer to help him, not going to lie. But it's so fun to march with our children in the parade and being a part of the community, and equally looking forward to marching in the Southborough Parade. I don't know if I can get Brian to pull the children then, but working on it. Maybe Athletic Council will pull the wagon. We had an amazing open house. I had parents email, myself, other administrators, and have comments that they really could feel the balance between making positive connections with the children while helping support academic excellence. And that really was a strive this year for our professional development, is how do we reach out to our children, get them engaged in school, and have a positive connection with an adult to help build the safe learning environment while supporting students if they have questions, risk-taking activities. So research shows that every time a child has a strong relationship with an adult in a school or a positive role model, they tend to have, they tend to make better choices. And that was the push that we did this year. And to have parents give that feedback back to us really helped support the work that we did. I want to say that Director Maura Morrison is doing a phenomenal job with Chicago. We have the high school version of Chicago coming up for our High School Musical. They have auditions every Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Cast has been set. It's open to the parents of the students, faculty members and administrators, for them to come and be a part of rehearsal, see what's going on with the stage. They're very receptive to feedback. It was really great to work with her on this. It's not open to students. They need to wait till opening day or kind of ruins the fun of it. But it was really great to see the collaboration with them. They have, as you can see in the principal report, fifty-eight students are on the cast, and additional twenty students of our finance department are in the pit orchestra. And we have ten already backstage when the additional ten signed up. So we're making a whole-school activity where every child can find their niche. Under activities and clubs, we spoke a little bit about it today. We recently had our Activity Extravaganza. We have over sixty clubs here at Algonquin. And fifty of them, on the Activity Extravaganza day, were outside on our front patio. And you can kind of see a couple pictures over to the side. There's the Impact Club, where they set up posters. Individuals that are in the club basically recruit new members, reach out and have students join, make friendships, find their niche in Algonquin, take a really big school and make it small and personalized for them. So that work is not only fun in itself, it helps the child to develop and really make a positive connection with the school. Our robotics team, eleven-hundred, they pulled this crazy contraption, the length of the parade as well. Fantastic. They're going to be at the Heritage Day Parade. That's, again, one of our clubs just really being involved. DECA did a lot of volunteer work for Apple Fest, I believe, the day of the five K. Yes, I did push the double jogger. I did want to get in the double jogger. I did not win it. It was hot that day. Freshen orientation and dance, phenomenal success. So I'll talk about it in a moment. There's a lot of glitter involved. But our upperclassmen really go above and beyond with Ms. Braun and Ms. Turner to make a seamless transition for our eighth and ninth graders. The most difficult transition in some of our students' academic careers is that eighth and ninth grade year. And once again, they've created that ability for our incoming students to latch on to an upperclassman peer who's been vetted through the orientation team to be a strong role model. You now see them eating lunch together in the cafeteria, walking down the hallway together, sitting in the library together. Again, a bond formed so a student could take a really big school and make it small and personalized for them. Mike stole my thunder for athletics, but I do want to say super kudos for track camp. It was at the very end of last year. This is a total community event where we take all nine schools and have them come here to Algonquin, which is the tenth school within our three districts, and we host track camp where for five days, I think it was five to eight, every night, students learn a different sport and track. And it's run by our athletes. And it's for elementary and middle school students. They learn a different sport each night, and then on Friday, they have their mini-track competition. And even some of our tiny tomahawks participate. And it's so fun to see our community come together and be a part of it. It's a great fundraiser for our track program, but also just a great way to bring us together. Over the summer, our math teachers and cross-country coaches, Mr. Galvin and Ms. Mariani, hosted a summer cross-country series. By the end of the series, they had over sixty participants running on some of our fields in the back on the cross-country course. That leads to students being engaged in athletics and making strong bonds with educators before the school doors even open. So I have to commend their work over the summer. I do want to point out that I carry this picture with me. It is a picture of me standing with our Unified Sports Team when they received the MIAA Good Sportsmanship Award for Unified Track. It's a true testament of what it takes to become a banner school. It's so fun to see the smiles between our athletes and partners working together. And I will never truly capture the ability of our partners and how they work with our athletes to guide them through the very difficult aspects of sports, navigating wins and losses, as was brought up earlier, and really uniting the community around that. So, super kudos to Kevin, great work to athletics, great work to student support. It doesn't just happen. It takes a team to make it happen. Thank you for that. On to department news. I wanted to give a shout-out to Ms. Burns. She was recently selected out of quite a few educators to go overseas and do expansive curriculum work, see how other cultures teach history, take that work, bring it back to Algonquin, and help advance our curriculum. She's constantly pushing herself. She also earned the NEF Grant for fostering civil discourse in her classroom, always looking for new resources and modeling for her peers. They had earned another NEF Grant also to expand some of the resources in addition to work that they're doing. Our fine arts department, I wanted to give a shout-out to Nadine Harrington. She was the winner of the first-ever NEF Annual Art Contest. She's also a musician. It's so great to see our students excel. And I tried to sneak a picture in there, but it doesn't do it any justice. She received a thousand-dollar scholarship for them. In applied arts, we received another NEF Grant for a think tank. They had to explain to me what that meant. But it's basically how the new generation or millennials do a lot of their business work. And so they're creating that environment in the classroom to take their classroom skills that they learn and apply it real life. And it was really innovative of Ms. Riley and Ms. Griffin to come together and think, how can we expand our coursework and make our students more prepared globally and beyond? In science, they also did some curricular work over the summer. Congratulations to another NEF Grant won in which our physics department received some supports for wind turbine kits to take some of the physics concepts that they work outside of the classroom. Our guidance department welcomed Ms. Cummings, our new CRC member, because Ms. Hudgens moved into guidance. She's already at work on the annual college. Ninety-plus schools already confirmed to come with a hundred-plus confirmed college visits, supporting our children in making a decision that works best for them on the college that they want to attend. In the library, I still haven't won Tuesday trivia yet. I know Mr. McDonald took it one time last year, and there was a competition going on with Ms. Tontonato. The kids are fantastic at trivia. But what's fun is to see the students and the faculty members come together in the library. Great space. Our library was recognized in the September Spotlight for Massachusetts School Library Association. True testament to the team that we have here with Ms. Anderson, Mr. Cremen, and our librarian, Ms. Honey. Student support and ESL department, our caller guard did phenomenal performance in our Friday Night Lights game. They do the halftime show. It's great to see them all come back together and continue their work. I know they march in our parades, too. And thank you to our SBLT, School-Based Leadership Team, and the collaboration with Ms. Brown. We're working to expand the internship opportunities for some of our school-based programs here so that students can practice life skills development here at Algonquin that then helps provide them to be successful beyond our Algonquin walls. In PV department, they ran with the positive connections. They did a lot of different cooperative games activities to engage students in the curriculum and take that work and move it out of the classroom. I snuck in some pictures there. In math, Ms. Sensei used the positive connections to show one of the videos that we did was "What Is Your Spark." She had all of the students write interesting facts about themselves and use that to learn about her children beyond math. And that engagement, that level that she went to, then makes math less scary and helps them have a common item to talk about as they work through the different curriculum items. English, we've already talked about, spoke about the Algonquin Writing Center. Mr. Zarnecki and Ms. Stein won another NEF Grant to continue that work. And just this afternoon, they brainstormed, they thought about it, they offered a college writing session for our students to have a peer come back in and vet the college essays, just helping our seniors prepare for that college journey. And it's peer-to-peer work. So the peer who's in the tutor in the writing lab is learning, as well as the student that came to see them. Very popular. And under the administration part, I wanted to thank the work by our peer mentors, which I spoke to earlier. I wish I could capture how much glitter they have in the Gaunt Gauntlet. So if you've never seen the Gaunt Gauntlet, you should come. There's a picture on the other page where they all line up as the freshmen come into the dance, and they just cheer them on in their name and make them really feel a part of T-Hawk Nation. Lot of glitter, lot of glitter to clean up. I'm sure Mike can speak to that. Thank you to Central Office and Superintendent Johnson for bringing us, Dr. Brown. It aligns seamlessly with the professional development work that we were doing. I know that the Faculty Book Club is now reading one of the texts, the Happiness Advantage that he recommended, all about just promoting positive psychological and social development with our students and connecting with them as we support academic learning. Thank you to Ms. Braun and Ms. Turner. They came up with a wonderful idea in which we chalked outside all around Algonquin. We wrote all over every aspect of outside of Algonquin about the different ways that our students would be successful. Welcome back. Can't wait to see your spark. Welcome back. Can't wait to see you shine in this. And there's a picture in which they encourage every one of us to go out there and write something for a peer, for a student, for a community member. So as they came in that first week of school, that's when the rain did hold off. They were able to see their names. They were able to see these positive accolades and things about them that really helped give us a wonderful, positive, happy start to Algonquin. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always one of my favorite parts of the school committee meeting. And I'm glad to go in and pencil in, pencil in Pen.
In Pen.
The states of Chicago in my calendar because I love that show, and I always enjoy seeing the kids perform. And it's good to have that every, all the involvement across all aspects of the school. Any other, any comments from the committee members, questions? Okay. Thank you. That was great.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have the enrollments distribution.
Good on that. I'm just kind of shocked at the drop from the projected number of Southborough kids in the school to what the actual is. If I'm working on my math right, it's about a two percent swing from last year to this year in terms of the assessment and the like. It's, I mean, that's a, that's a material number that Northborough ought to hear about sooner or later. I'm sure they probably know it already, but...
Oh, yes.
It's, I mean, it is a big difference. We had projected five-hundred-and-seventy-seven kids, and we only have five-fifty-three from Southborough. That brings us below forty percent, even below thirty-nine percent now, in terms of the percentage of the population. And we kind of spread the money out based on that formula a lot. I got thirty-eight and sixty-one and a half or something as the new numbers. That's material. Interesting.
The one, it's, you know, September eighteenth, and a lot happens between September eighteenth and October one. I don't know if twelve percent or four percent will happen, but I will concur with that statement. We spent, I would say, the better part of three weeks last year really digging deeply into the minimum local contribution numbers, which is what really affects
Right.
the assessment in a very dramatic way. We had a shift of about seventeen students last year, and that was a significant increase for Northborough. So one of the things that we discussed last year in budget season was how very closely, not only do we have to monitor these numbers, but how very early we have to have, start having conversations about the potential impact. Either way, in this case, you know, it's a big shift for Northborough, which is a significant increase in dollars. The MLC formula, the Minimum Local Contribution Formula, only looks at one aspect, at enrollment as one aspect of affecting the assessment numbers. But from all of the conversations we had last year, which were quite frankly exhausting with the Department of Ed, to try to get more information about what are the other impacts of the variables that they say are part of this formula on the assessment, we couldn't find any of the other six or five that they said have, any of them had such a significant impact as the individual enrollment numbers. So what they say and what really plays out in the number calculation is not aligned. And this will have a dramatic effect on Northborough's budget, which then will definitely affect our conversations. So John Codere and I agreed that this year, we were going to begin our conversations very early around what the MLC swing is like, and that will factor into his financial monitoring presentation that he does in December. But if these hold true, it's definitely more of a shift than we anticipated, which may have something to do with, you know, folks moving off to a private school. We've been very lucky in Southborough as well in terms of numbers over the last several years. I call it the Dan Kalenda Enrollment Model, which will be presented in, I know, it's your legacy, Dan. And that will be presented when we have our October one numbers, but that will definitely show you the change in enrollments. And in Southborough, we have enjoyed close to ninety percent, ninety-five percent enrollment coming, you know, forward from the eighth grade. And that is an impact, how many kids are leaving to go elsewhere. So this could be the first year it dips below that in some time. But as a trend, enrollments are going to go down slowly. And I think when we look at that model next month, when we have our October one numbers, that will be a far more in-depth conversation about enrollments. We track it against NeZEC. We track it against Census. The best indicator is who's already in the pipeline in our system for the next three or four years, but I think we're going to be looking at some enrollment shifts.
Right.
Interestingly enough, the K eights in Northborough are going down. The K eights in Southborough are pretty much status quo in enrollments. So that's an interesting, you know, discussion when we look at Algonquin's numbers as well. So yes, we'll just keep a watchful eye.
Yeah.
And I just have a question. So how many students do we have from the exchange program? I think we're at three.
I believe it's three.
So this year, I think, in revolving, we're just at six figures after four years or five years of that program, four years of the program. And we now, of course, have more than just Cambridge International that we're working with. So we have an, we've in- So we have an, we've increased the likelihood that we'll have students coming to us. But yes, it's definitely a concern. Keep moving forward. The FY two thousand and eighteen expenditure report is in your packet. Now that we're in the budget, part of the agenda, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Desmond, I'd like to invite Christine Teig to join us, the Regional Treasurer. Sorry, Lynn, we've switched committees. Wait, we're not inviting... This is eight-thirty, it must be region. If we could invite Christine to join us, because she will partner in some of the conversations around the budget piece here. So the expenditure report is in your packet. The end-of-the-year available funds was a little bit more than last year. That goes in part to the great collaboration that we experienced this year with Dr. Walsh's administration and her entire team to make sure that we're ever mindful of those very valuable dollars that were, that are part of the expenditure report. Each month, you'll note that athletics did have a slight end-of-the-year balance. And that already was known and was taken into consideration when we built the FY nineteen budget. You heard Mike talk a little bit earlier about finally being able to upkeep those those pieces of equipment in the weight room. That was a long time coming and that was something that we planned to do. They were out of, much in need of repair and they did not have a maintenance plan in place for some time. So we were looking at equipment that needed to be, a lot of attention paid to that because a lot of our athletes and a lot of our students use that equipment. So we have a longitudinal program in place to make sure that we use those athletic dollars wisely. So the auditors are going to be in next week, which is about a month earlier than usual. So we're very excited because all those votes that we take, approved till audited, we'll find that out in about a week. So Tom Scanlon is due back in, it's his third year in our district. So we would need a vote, a motion, a vote.
Yep.
So I would move that we vote to approve the file in FY two thousand and eighteen and to view a general fund expenditure report until it's audited.
Right. Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously?
Also, moving along quickly, and all good news actually on the statement of revenue, which Christine will probably speak to in more detail when she gets to her treasurer's report. You'll note three areas of this revenue report. The first is transportation. It's on here, right? Where is it? We did receive a little more than anticipated. So all the times that we talk about writing our legislative representatives, Senate and House, and letting them know how important transportation, regional transportation is to us, has had a positive impact. So we saw a slight uptick. That will fold over into our FY twenty budgeting process. So that'll give us a little additional funds in our transportation revolving account. Likewise, circuit breaker, two good pieces of information. We received an extraordinary relief, sort of unexpected revenue receipt. And that's based on sort of reimbursement because our costs were higher. So on the one hand, it's delightful to see a slight increase in revenue in circuit breaker, extraordinary relief, but we paid for it upfront. So basically, our expenditures, our costs were higher. But it's nice to see a little increase. That has to be spent in the fiscal year it's received. So we file for that claim. Some years we get it, some years we don't. And this year we did because of our high costs and that was expended in eighteen. But you'll also note that, again, we've been asking our State House to appreciate that our special ed costs are ever increasing. And they did, in fact, restore us to seventy-two percent reimbursement from our budgeted sixty-two. So you note on the circuit breaker line item that we anticipated three eighty-two and we received over four twenty-four. That factors into our circuit breaker revolving account and will be taken into consideration as we prepare the FY twenty budget. Right now, I just received estimated circuit breaker revenues for FY nineteen and it looks as if, without additional cuts, we're at seventy-two percent. So that's great news to start at that point. That's, that's based on the projected quarterly receipts that were due to get in, that were due to receive. So that's all good news.
What about transportation? What percent of the transportation budgets does that represent?
Our transportation budget is about a fifty-fifty split on operational and budget.
I mean, the state reimbursement?
It's about seventy, sixty-eight, seventy percent, I think, this year. Yeah, so it went up just a couple points, not as much at circuit breaker, but we were surprised to receive that. And by the way, we really don't have noticed that we are, notification that we're going to receive that until we receive the last quarterly check from the state. And it's a surprise. It's a joyful surprise, but it's a surprise. Another something to note, again, speaks to the high school's great work in partnering with the district office. You'll note that some of our collections are above hundred percent in the area of parking and student activities and athletic receipts. You know, Mike, when you presented the, how many people were at the game?
Yep.
We're excited about that, but on this side of the aisle, sometimes our mind goes to gate receipts and athletic revenue. So I'll, I'll in on that one, that's right. Kids first and then what does that mean for the budget? Because that means we can do more for our students. So that's good news. So you'll also note, after conversations last year, we have an insurance revolving account set up for OPEB, albeit not much money, but it's better than zero and we're making progress. We also know that when we refinanced the bonds last year, we were very much told that they appreciate the challenge of a regional school district in funding OPEB because indirectly comes from the town. So this is about savings and strategic investment in capitalizing on opportunities that come our way. So we're very excited about that. And that's in the eighteen revenue, equally exciting in the nineteen, and we're off to a good start. So we would need a vote to approve this as well.
Paul.
So I move that we vote to approve the final FY two thousand and eighteen statement of revenue until it's audited.
Second.
Motioned by Paul Bucka, seconded by Dan Kalenda.
We just want to, so, I mean, if I'm reading this right, we received a couple of hundred thousand dollars more than we had estimated in terms of receipt point of view. And we spent it all because our costs were high or wasn't, a little bit more of that money we could have slid down into the OPEB insurance line or in, no, it just can't.
Well, we could if what we've used the money, if what we need to budget for this year in FY twenty does not necessarily access or use or expend the extra revolving funds.
Right, okay.
So there's time to be, yep.
Okay.
There's had to be time. This is the end of eighteen, that money doesn't go away. It usually sits in some revolving account or like the transportation revolving account for consideration when we budget this year.
Thank you.
Okay. And Christine, again, I really applaud the work that she is doing with us. It's great to collaborate on so many topics and so many discussions of interest, all about money and, again, being, you know, fiscally responsible. But Christine is an active participant in a lot of our conversations around finance.
Too many.
Too many, I know, I was going to say that, but I probably didn't want to say that.
Okay, so any other questions on the, on the revenue report? Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so Regional Treasurer's report.
Okay. I'm pleased to just say that FY eighteen, as far as the closeout and contribution to E and D, is about a hundred thousand dollars more. And again, this is all preliminary until we actually go through with the DOR in the process and also the audit. This year, we're looking at adding another two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Last year, the number was around one eighty. It could be within two eighty or three hundred thousand, depending on, you know, where things flush out once we finalize everything. However, the bad news is, this still puts us below the policy limit. The policy voted by school committee last year was between the range of three point two five percent to three point seven five percent. We did realize, though, that we would probably be coming under and that's why the school committee voted typically a much lesser amount for FY nineteen. And I think we really need to start weaning off the E and D appropriations into the next fiscal year because we still have the bond issues outstanding and get a call from S and P every year as far as our status, financial status. So that's, that's the good news. Of course, the E and D, the percentage is about, we're estimating to be about two point three percent of the total. So that's, that again is the good news. Before you, there is a vote before school committee on the FY nineteen assessment. We received an additional fifteen thousand dollars in chapter seventy funding for FY nineteen. And before school committee is, is a vote to revise the assessment to reflect this increase. It really didn't have a significant impact. The Northborough Regional, the Northborough, town of Northborough, actually, there, because of MLC changes, their decrease was about eighteen thousand and Southborough was about three thousand for net of the fifteen.
So this is something we experience every year because our budgets are passed before the governor passes his budget and the state approves theirs.
Mm-hmm.
So we would need that motion to approve the FY two thousand and nineteen budget assessments and then we'll communicate this to the towns. Come on.
Paul.
So I move that we approve the FY two thousand and nineteen budget and assessments as follows. The gross operating budget of twenty-three million, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight with an operational budget assessment of eighteen million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, representing an operational assessment to Northborough of eleven million, three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and an operational assessment to Southborough of seven million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars, along with debt payments of one million, forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars, representing a debt assessment to Northborough of six hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four and a debt assessment to Southborough of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine. Total assessment operating and debt of nineteen million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, representing a total assessment to Northborough of eleven million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and total assessment to Southborough of eight million, sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan Kalenda.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Any discussion?
Good news.
Seeing none? All those in favor? All right, passes unanimously.
Before we move into nineteen, I did want to add something. We had anticipated that we were going to be able to return more to E and D. In the fourth quarter, we received notification that our school choice line item was charged an unanticipated amount of about ninety-seven thousand dollars. Because we had not budgeted that amount of money in our school choice line item and nor had we received any prior notification to this, we absolutely started investigating why we were charged that increment. When you have a child that is a school choice child who may or may not be moving on to another district using the school choice option and it, that child requires certain services, it's a significant increase to school choice. However, the good news, team effort at Central, great work by Marie Allen. We basically said, Marie, this is not right. We were on the phone, Marie was on the phone. We had a couple of conference calls with the Department of Education representative and what we do believe will be happening, that this was an erroneous charge because of the pathway that led the students to wherever they are now. And what will happen is, while we won't receive any money in, towards eighteen's E and D, it won't roll into eighteen, they don't give money back. The department doesn't, the state doesn't give money back. They will be reducing our school choice amount this year. So that we should see some balancing of what we budgeted because we'll be receiving a significantly larger credit. So in the end, while not in eighteen, we should see some of that school choice line item revert to E and D. So we'll be very, very much watching what happens this year with those credits. So I just wanted to put that out there. So we were quite disappointed, we were really excited that we were going to come in over three hundred and then this was, again, a fourth quarter surprise. So sometimes we get additional circuit breaker and sometimes we get an additional charge. In the packet also is the FY nineteen financial report. We've already started to expend our FY nineteen budget. Again, it's early in the year. We would request a motion to approve until audited.
Paul.
So I move that we vote to approve until audited the FY nineteen financial report, sorry.
Second.
Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Dan Kalenda. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
And also, the FY two thousand and nineteen, it's just one month. We did not make any deposits to those revolving accounts that we're ordinarily tracking because it, you know, it's just August, the kids weren't even back. And so at this point, we just want to vote to approve until audited.
I move that we vote to approve until audited the FY nineteen statement of revenue as of August thirty-first.
Second.
Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Dan Kalenda. All those in favor?
Yes.
Budget priorities are in the packet this evening. It's just shared with you as a matter of reference. We'll probably be discussing this in much more detail next month. These are not the FY twenty budget priorities, but they are the FY nineteen budget priorities. And as usual, we move forward from the priorities that we have in place for this fiscal year. So whether we want to discuss it tonight or just review what our current priorities are, usually the administrative team and I sit together and we have some conversations about what is, what are our priorities and share those with you at budget priority discussion time.
So, Paul.
I did have just one thought. The third bullet, prepare all students for high levels of success in various high stakes assessments. High stakes assessments part kind of bugs me. I mean, what if we just say, prepare all students for high levels of success?
So I, I mean, I think we wrote this because of SAT scores and things like that. There was a specific aim at the assessment, the assessment testing numbers. And I think if you take any reference of that out, it opens it up a little bit from an interpretation point of view. I mean, high levels of success in what, you know? And I think we were trying to focus the academics on making sure that they did a good job on the SAT scores and the PSAT scores and, you know, the MCAS number, you know, and all of that stuff was, at one point in time anyway, that was the kind of the goal here. I think if you take out the reference of the assessments, it's a little, it's a little vague.
I guess that's the part that bugs me. I don't think that should be the goal, you know, preparing to do well on the test.
Not everyone's going to be going to the same level of postgraduate work, you know, potentially.
I think the stress of high stakes testing and particularly to assert it in this way, it puts undue pressure on students as well. And sometimes, of course, it's sacrifice for teaching toward the test. And so, you know, optimal performance, you know, people, high levels of success will vary and it would seem to be inclusive of the testing atmosphere that we do live under still.
I thought exactly.
So I mean, I would, I would continue to disagree a little bit. I mean, I think that our rankings are very empirically driven and kind of drive the way people look at us and our success as an organization and as a system. And, you know, if, if we take our eye off that ball a little bit and we start sliding down the rankings, then we won't see twenty kids from Southborough not come from eighth grade into the school, but we'll see forty kids from Southborough not come from eighth grade into the school. We'll see some greater number of Northborough kids not come from eighth grade into the school. If we, if we don't, you know, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I think, you know, teaching to the test, I would guess these guys would all say, we really don't want to do that. We don't do that, but we are mindful of the test. I'd hate for them to, to, you know, think that we were okay with them taking their eye off that ball. That's kind of one guy's opinion, but...
We still, we still have the phrasing of high levels of success, right?
Yeah, but that could mean track, you know, it's, it's...
No, it says in, we still have assessments, so very, high levels of success in various assessments. So we're still promoting...
Okay, if you, as long as you leave the assessments in. Okay, if you, as long as you leave the assessments in, you know, you can, you can not call it high stakes all you want.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
But I, but I would want to continue the reference to the assessments would be my preference as one member of the committee.
Okay, I thought I was hearing that, that was to be deleted. I was just gonna suggest including, adding the word including after success. But if, if we're, if, if we're not doing that, if we're just taking out the words high stakes, you know, I mean, what's the, what do we have to do here?
Maybe the part that I, did I misinterpret you?
Yeah, my original thought was just put a period after success. Well, there's no periods, but just stop after success.
So that's why I'm saying add the word, just insert the word including and then in various assessments. I mean, that's another idea.
That's better.
Yeah, I mean, we still have to.
But I mean, when I read that, I read teach to the test, you know, it just.
I, I'm pretty confident we don't teach to the test.
I know, I know.
But it, but the tests are incredibly important. Ask any student who's preparing for the PSATs and the SATs and the ACTs, it's incredibly important. So the, the high caliber of the quality education leads to that. Yeah, they have to.
Right. Yeah.
Well, Greg is wordsmithing to my left and he suggests college and career readiness, which is somewhat appropriate because colleges in fact, high stake assessments.
Solid.
College and career readiness.
Smooth, Greg.
I like it.
I like it. So what would that wording be?
Quiet, but smooth.
Mm-hmm. Just lean over.
That sounds.
All right, we, so how's it gonna read? Do we all have it?
Prepare all students for high levels, levels of success in college and career readiness. Something to that effect.
Is that, how does that sound?
I like it.
Yeah, are you guys okay with that? Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It aligns well with some of the visions we have in our school improvement plan.
Okay. All right. Any other additions, changes on this? I'd like to vote, you know, so that, because you're doing the work on the budget and the Southborough budget has moved up, um, so we can, um.
We, we have a little time to discuss these next month?
Okay.
Sure. And, and vote them. We usually take two months to consider possibilities and move them forward.
Okay. Um, so next month we can vote on these, finalize them. So if in the meanwhile, you know, thinking of anything that comes up that maybe we add to or subtract or whatever, case may be, so.
Okay, also in the packet, um, is the budget calendar in, in its infancy phase. As we know, we add to this and it's always amazing how many meetings that we do have as we prepare for the budget. I did attach an interesting, um, change in Southborough's budgeting process in, in some conversations I had, um, with Mark Purple and with, um, Adrian, who is Adrian, um, Dan, what is Adrian, Peters.
Yes.
Peters, um, new chair of the financial advisory, that while we could potentially bring Southborough's budget in much earlier based on their timeline, the challenge is always regional. Cause as we know, we don't always have the regional numbers until the end of March. And Southborough also votes, um, the Algonquin budget. So I think, you know, on the K eight side, it's going to be a rigorous budget season in Southborough to meet some of these timelines. But the concern would be, you know, trying to get in very tight on the regional budget because Southborough's town meeting has moved up. But we'll work diligently to do what we can with what we know. But I thought, you know, from a regional standpoint, it is important to know what's happening in both of our communities because our budget does go before Northborough separately and Southborough separately for approval. So our budget calendar will probably shift a little bit, but it's, it's early to decide, you know, when we're gonna have our first operational budget subcommittee. It could be, well be in November. Um, we will be releasing the budgets to our administrative team, uh, for work. Jimmy, you coming in on eight o'clock tomorrow morning? Probably have it done by five o'clock, maybe we'll have the, um, but we're all working together in infinite vision and this year everything's going to be done in our budget management system for the first time ever. So it should be far more efficient for our building administrators as well. And this colorful document is something we've been trying to get in place for some time. Those, uh, calls that I'm sure never are annoying, which sounds something like, can you come to Central and sign warrants? Uh, we actually have a warrant calendar this year, so, um, you'll see region, uh, those are the, the dates that we're actually looking for signatures. So whoever's on the warrant committee, uh, anytime after three o'clock on those days, warrants will be made available for you to sign. Um, and we will always have a pile of warrants for all three districts to sign it combined. So we're looking at each committee signing twice a month and this will help, um, you navigate the timeline.
Thank you.
Cause we, the calls are, I'm sure it's, it's right there.
Listen in here.
So, um, that is hopefully something that will work well for us this year.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, um, old business, bring your own device update.
Another team from the high school, and I'm actually gonna turn this over to Greg to, um, introduce a little bit of this initiative, follow-up from June's meeting.
So we are, uh, pleased to have Julie Doyle, Brian Callman, um, and Andy Mariotti to talk about some of the summer projects and updates that took place with technology and infrastructure. And also as, as promised, um, we said we'd bring back to the table the bring your own device, um, program and an update for the committee. So welcome, Julie.
Thank you.
She should also chipper at nine o'clock at night.
We have a few slides to go with our presentation, so for those who are.
Yeah.
Yes. Great. It's coming. Okay.
So, um, we are here to give you an update on the bring your own device initiative at Algonquin. Uh, just to make sure we cover all our bases, uh, we have included four of the people who have been very, um, involved and instrumental in the planning and the implementation of BYOD. So Principal Walsh will be adding to the presentation. Um, our district technology manager, Andy Mariotti, will be adding to the presentation and for his very first school committee presentation, Mr. Brian Callman, who is doing a phenomenal job as Algonquin's instructional technology teacher. So hello from all of us. So, um, we have been talking about BYOD for a while. Um, it was part of the district's strategic plan, um, Vision 2020, which was written a few years ago. Uh, we're excited to tell you that we are just about ready to launch this initiative and we're aiming to do that, uh, for the very beginning of term two, which is I believe November fifth. Um, we originally tried to make that happen for the beginning of this school year, but um, we felt it was too rushed. We needed to have some extra time to put everything in place and that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. So I just want to start, um, and tell you why we think BYOD makes, makes sense. Um, our focus is and, and should always be what it is we can do to help our students learn. And, um, one of the things that BYOD will do is, is to provide more time for learning. The original structures that have been in place with technology use in the classroom have been shared carts and, um, it takes time for teachers to sign up for the carts, to go pick up the carts, to hand out the computers, to collect the computers and so on. So, um, BYOD hopefully will provide more time for learning. Um, BYOD will also help our students become better and more responsible digital citizens. Um, it will help prepare them for both college and the career because that's the type of environment that they'll come across when they go to college and, and when they have a job. Uh, now that Canvas is fully implemented at Algonquin, um, the combination of Canvas and BYOD really is gonna provide some great blended learning and personalized learning opportunities for our students. Um, and Brian will speak more about this in, in a few minutes, but, um, there are supports in place to help teachers rethink their curriculum, to take advantage of the powerful self-directed and collaborative learning opportunities that can take place when every student has an access, has access to their own device.
All right. Uh, so I'm just gonna talk to you quickly about the, uh, the guidelines and FAQs and how they were developed. I believe they were supposed to be included in your packets this evening. So there's a lot of, uh, work that went into preparing those documents even, uh, prior to when I joined the instructional tech team, uh, in the spring. There's a lot of, um, research that got into it and looking at similar programs both at local schools, uh, and, uh, across the nation. I think we even had a couple of international schools that we, uh, looked at as well. A lot of good resources available online. Um, and so these, uh, this research was conducted by, uh, a team of people, uh, and also then, uh, when we developed what, what really fit Algonquin's needs, um, we submitted our, our proposals, uh, to legal counsel and, uh, continued to include more people with the team to develop, uh, really effective, uh, information that could be communicated and develop a strong program. Uh, once, uh, these are, this program's up and running and we're, we're gonna be ready to go, we'll be, uh, putting both of these documents on the school website for easy access. Uh, and, and a very similar, uh, process was undergone to develop, uh, procedure and a process for students in need of loaned devices, uh, stu, uh, school-owned, school-issued devices. Um, again, a similar process, many minds working together, uh, collaborating and then passing it up to have, uh, have approval.
Okay. Um, uh, when we were discussing, uh, BO, BYOD as a possibility at Algonquin, um, I was asked to do an assessment of the infrastructure, uh, existing at Algonquin and what we might need, uh, in order to have a successful BYOD implementation. Um, and so, um, we agreed that we needed to upgrade some key infrastructure components in preparation for the deployment of BYOD. Um, so we, uh, we identified that we needed, uh, an upgrade to our switches. Um, Mike talked a little bit earlier about, um, the, uh, school going through renovation, uh, how many years ago was it? Twelve? About twelve years ago. So a lot of our switch infrastructure is from that time, um, which was really, uh, supported, uh, well the, uh, technology needs at the time, but, um, probably wouldn't be, uh, sufficient for supporting the type of needs we would have with every student with a device. So a newer, faster switch infrastructure was, um, put in, uh, one late night, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, that was fun. And, uh, we got everything, uh, up and working, uh, in that one night, uh, which was great. Everything, uh, I think came, did everything come back on in the morning, that next morning? It was pretty good. That was pretty good. Um, and, uh, we are constantly, um, refreshing our wireless access points here as well. Um, but we are now have, uh, we're, uh, right now deploying, um, some higher capacity wireless access points, uh, which should, um, allow us to have, uh, you know, these higher concentrations of students with devices in classes. And, um, over the years, our, uh, internet, uh, needs have obviously, um, been increasing and, uh, we were able to upgrade our internet speeds from about five hundred megabits per second last year to a full gigabit internet speed at the high school.
Thank you. So I just want to say thank you to, um, Julie, Brian and Andy. It's truly a collaboration and when we go to communicate to the parents, we work together to make sure that that communication is seamless. We've been leveraging one call to keep our parents up to date in which we talk about how we encourage our students to already bring their device. This isn't something necessarily new for Algonquin. Many of our students have, um, an individual preference for their device. They use it very well in class and so we've continued to promote that with our parents. We leverage one call when I know there's new information going out along with the website, which Brian, uh, discussed. So when those items go up on the website, we'll send it out to our parents so that they stay abreast of what we're talking about. Uh, Ju, um, Julie and Brian are gonna be here on our, um, teacher conference night, parent teacher conference night, sorry about that, in which they're gonna host two different sessions. They're gonna host a session at the beginning of parent teacher conferences and a session at the, towards the end of parent teacher conferences. Our parents are already becoming a school that night, but then they can ask those individual questions about devices, things they may not have understood on the fact sheet, different parts of the rollout so that they can be prepared for that November fifth rollout. Very, very important to give that face time to our parents so that they feel supported in this transition. And then of course, we have our additional supports. At any time when our parents reach out to us, I know that Brian has been key in reaching right back out to them about questions about this. I've emailed them right away and picked up the phone and called them. Many of our members of our school-based leadership team have offered additional supports. We have our own great, um, SWAT team that gives us information. So that's all wrapped around in how we communicate to our parents. And then on the second slide, it's, well, where are our educators, right? There's many moving parts in this process and it is truly a collaboration because although you give every student a laptop or a device in a classroom, it doesn't necessarily mean that we've improved instruction. So one of our goals this year is the same goal that we use with Canvas in which we say, try something new. Our educators at Algonquin are very excited with the learning that they present. They're very engaging in how they present it to our students. And so by simply saying, try one new thing like we did with Canvas and look at the successes with that, we're really helping them to devise how bring your own device can be applicable within their content area. Huge importance on really letting the educators drive the learning that helps supports our students' needs. Canvas, as Julie had mentioned, now has been rolled out. So now we're taking the classroom and making it more seamless through Canvas and how to support our students. Wonderful opportunities in Canvas to really leverage feedback. You can do video feedback. You can do kind of a message board feedback. You can do an individualized email feedback to really help that child through their learning. And when they have their own device, it makes it easier for them to, to log on, do the things that they need to do. And then we have our digital literacy learners. These are our own educators in the building that go around and say like, hey, science department, what do you need? Um, hey, English department, what do you need? Okay, fine arts, your needs are very, very different. How do we set up a workshop to meet your specific needs? And Brian's done wonderful, um, this year, as Julie did last year in leading that team, to really specialize in the professional development that we give our educators to advance the learning so that although we're giving you a device, now what can we do with it? Let's really make the opportunities endless. I think I'm going back to Julie, right? Maybe? Brian?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna speak, uh, a little bit more specifically about some of the supports that, uh, Dr. Walsh was just talking about, um, uh, and, and how we're going to offer teacher training on this. Initially, um, for the rollout, we're going to, uh, myself and the digital, digital literacy leaders will be meeting with the departments, um, at their department meetings. The primary focus of this is, um, twofold. First of all, uh, the essentials, the kind of the nuts and bolts of, of how it's going to work and getting devices, uh, what printing will look like, what, um, charging will look like, loaners, stuff, stuff like that, that, um, will make it easier for our teachers to support our students with their daily needs. The other thing we're gonna be interested in is, uh, training on Netref. Uh, Network Referee is a, uh, internet monitoring software, uh, that helps, uh, inform and direct and monitor, uh, internet access well in class. Uh, it's a pretty intuitive software. Uh, once teachers, uh, received a little bit of training on it, it's a very useful tool. And so we're going to, uh, to work with that. I've already been in touch with the department chairs to address, uh, or to kind of survey any other needs that they have and they'd like addressed. We'll also be surveying the faculty to set up, uh, more in-depth workshops, uh, throughout the year. We, we know that like our students, many of our faculty are at different levels of comfort with using technology, so we want to meet them where they are. Some will be, uh, better to, to use Canvas more seamlessly than others, uh, different instructional methods. We want to make sure that we enhance it, uh, and improve the instruction as we go. Uh, so that's what our follow-up steps would be.
So, does anyone have any questions?
I have two questions if I might. Um, I was just reading a, read an article about some research on skim reading and the decreased comprehension of digital learners and I, I really appreciate especially the responsibility of these devices in school and I'm wondering, um, would that be wrapped into it and looking at the issues with comprehension, which of course is what we're hoping these will support?
I think that's an excellent question probably for our English department. But yeah, so in terms of learning digitally, right? I think sometimes we, we as educators also need to know when it's time to put the, put the device away. And, and, um, you know, the fact that our kids will have the device all the time doesn't mean they'll be using them all the time. I mean, they'll definitely be using them a lot of the time, but in terms of your question, I, I'd be really interested to read that article and, and I could follow up.
I can send it to you.
True, that'd be great.
My second question would be, I know that many schools are looking to reverse engineer the wifi because of the radiation issues. All of France has gone. All of France has gone back to Ethernet, and as I hear it being ramped up, I have the health issues as a concern.
I think that's very valid, actually. And we've, we, just a couple of years ago, had those concerns voiced, and we brought in an independent group to review what we're doing here and right now. As it stands, we're in compliance with any regulations that would govern that. But I think that continuing to, you know, follow up on that and keep abreast of, you know, current research and future research is really important. But as it stands right now, you're absolutely right. Wi-Fi has really kind of taken over. When the school was first, when I first came here, there was no Wi-Fi, and Wi-Fi has, you know, certainly come in, and it's right here. It's the same issue what you're talking about with the radiation that might come from cellphones, actually, that students carry in their pockets and that we carry around. I think that's something that's going to, we're going to have to continue to look at the research on, and make sure that we're on.
There's some kind of legislation on, too, that would be good to keep abreast of.
Absolutely, definitely. And, you know, we're very interested in this. We talk about this in our tech department all the time, you know. These are, you know, very, we were just talking just before we came in about, you know, how much has changed in the last 20 years, but how probably the next 10 years with the research that's going to come out, it's going to be really telling for a lot of the technology that we're utilizing and what the, you know, what the results of that would be.
I think it's interesting that, like, the brain hasn't changed in at least 50,000 years, but the demands that especially the devices put on it is something to consider.
Sure, absolutely, definitely.
In a lot of things.
Kind of nice, yeah.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
What are you guys going to do with the current computer carts you already have? What are your plans for?
So, those are going to be part of our loner program.
Oh, okay.
And there are certain carts, like, for instance, in the science department, they have certain programs that they need installed, and they need to use, like, laboratory different programs. So, there will be some carts that are set aside that have those instructional software programs that need to be installed, that we're not expecting our students to pay for.
Okay.
As you mentioned, you know, some teachers are more advanced than others, I guess, with using technology in the classroom, and I wonder if there's going to be a mechanism for teachers to share their experiences with each other?
Yes, definitely. One of the things that I've really enjoyed getting to do in this position is work with other teachers and join PLCs to talk about utilizing technology. And so, that's definitely going to be factored into the way that our teachers will share their experiences with each other. We also, last spring, Dr. Walsh gave us the chance to have a technology showcase at a faculty meeting, where we presented, and different teachers shared some of their technological uses in the classroom. So, yeah, I definitely think that one of my focuses is getting teachers excited to talk to other teachers about what they're doing, because that, I think, really increases the buy-in and then the success of the whole program.
Good, thanks.
So, you know, reading the paperwork and stuff, one of the requirements is that the student device must be protected by antivirus software. We don't provide it. How do you audit that? I mean, and, you know, how do you know that they're keeping it patched? And, I mean, the last thing you want to do is introduce a virus into a network this big, I think.
I don't want to get too technical right now, but.
Don't.
Okay.
I just want to know, you've got something in place that does what I just said.
We do, we will have something in place that does monitor that, and also, the way that the network is designed, each individual device, in a sense, is really not fully on the network. It's kind of isolated in its own little area. You know, it's, that device will basically be allowed to, a one-way path out to the internet where all of our services are. We are really moving all of our services out to cloud services, as opposed to supplying them here within the realm of the school. And then, we can poke little holes potentially, if necessary, for printing and other internal services. But all in all, the protection really comes from isolating those individual machines within our network, so that way they really can't infect anything else.
I just hear you say you don't audit that.
To answer the original question, though, yes, we, our firewall can, we are, we are working on, on making it so that our firewall will detect computers that are not protected.
Oh, okay, terrific. Thanks.
Thank you. That's very, very good.
Thank you.
Lots of things changing. Okay, next item on the agenda is our policy development and distribution. So, it looks like we've.
It's all distribution.
Yep, so we have the policy, manual updated index, school-based access stipulator program, B210, I340 religious observance policy, J120 school immunization requirements, J220 dispensing of medications, J340 head injury and concussion policy. So, we can put these in our policy manuals.
Right, and the reason why you have the index is Cheryl Eppery is hoping that we all go virtual and start not using the binder, but actually going to the website, where they're more updated on a regular basis. We will, it was a strategy that she's trying. And also, we will be sending out a doodle next week. We've got a couple policies that we'd really like to bring to combine. We were able to bring them to Northboro and Southboro. They are very much tied to some of the presentation that you just saw. It's the acceptable use. Finally, it's moving forward, and the social media policy for staff and students. So, that will be the focus of our policy meeting. So, there'll be a doodle coming your way within the next couple of days.
That'd be great. We'd love to get together again. Yes. So, audience sharing, the next item. All right, and actually, I have a bit of audience sharing. This weekend, I had the privilege of participating in the Brian Arsenault bike. I was on the back. I was a passenger.
Motorcycle.
Yeah, motorcycle, yep. I'm a bike chick.
A whole new look for you.
I know. But it was awesome. We went, they went, it was over 200 bikes, rode all through Northboro by the high school. The fire department had a huge flag, biggest flag I've ever seen in my life. Maybe it's just I was just so close to it. And then, the hockey team was out front with their camo uniforms, went through Southboro. I don't know if any of you guys heard. And we went through Hopington, and it was like, people were on the, like, running out to their front yard to see what it was. They gave videos. But it was really, you know, a great event, and it's a great cause that the Arsenault family has put together. They fund various veteran services with it, and Texas BBQ provided nice lunch, and it was interesting. It was very good, so.
It was great that you did that. I mean, you know, with the death of any soldier, we talk about, you know, is, when you say the name, you know, they're not forgotten. So, the more we say his name, you know, Brian's not forgotten. You know, it's a big deal. You know, just to even simply do that, but to have 200-plus people remember him and go through various towns, you know, the Arsenault family is supported by that, and, you know, his name, you know, he lives on every single time that that is done. So, thank you for participating in that. The rumble was great to hear.
And then, they had a barbecue afterwards, as you said, at the FFW. And then, they also did basket raffles.
Yep.
Yeah, because the Frank family donated a basket, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, there was basket raffles. We put all our tickets in one basket, but.
Did you win?
No. As I saw the people, and they all had like 20 of these things, and I just had one, so. Strip, I thought I was doing pretty good buying a big strip, but many people, so many people, you know, was participating, and it was really kind of cool, because periodically through the route, it wasn't like you're in a parade, but, you know, there would be people out on the streets waving their flags with their child. And we went by Hayes Funeral Home, and gentleman was out there saluting as the motorcycle all went by, so. And the police departments in various, in Upton, Grafton, they blocked the intersections that were, you know, so that there was no interruption, no one cut in. And so, it was really, like, wonderful to see these other towns that really weren't, I mean, they were important to Brian, apparently, so, like, family members, but, like, for me, it wasn't the Northboro, Southboro, it was these other communities as well that, you know, participated and supported the ride, so it was quite an experience, so.
Thanks for joining us. And is it an annual thing they're going to have?
Yeah, this was the third annual, yep. Any other audience sharing? Okay, so we next have the personnel report with the new staff.
If I could, I have a question. So, we're adding two full-time math teachers, or we've added two full-time math teachers according to this report, but they're just one-year positions? I mean, that seemed to infer to me that we're going to have this big bump in how great our math department is for a year, and then it's going to go back to normal, or that? I can't be reading that right, is that?
Sometimes it's a replacement, a one-year leave of absence.
Yes.
And that's what it is.
All right, okay, so these are just backfilling always.
Correct.
Okay, I get it. Thank you very much. I'll read this stuff.
Yeah, that's good. Shows you pay attention. So, we have communications, district back to news letter. Algonquin receives national recognition from the Special Olympics, which we had heard Communication from George Edwards, Niask Commissioner of Public Schools, so that was.
Yeah, it's just delaying the decennial visit.
Delaying it, yep.
Niask is under construction yet again.
So, we have the distribution of the 2018-19 subcommittee assignments. We had passed that out today. It shows last year's assignments, but then it, the other column has this year, so I forgot to hide that middle column. But, so these are the subcommittee assignments that we, that I heard back from everyone so far. We did have, I did have one question from a member on the K-12 World Language Study Group.
So, the K-12 World Language Study Group was started last year. Interest generated at one of our K-8 committees, and it has just completed its report, actually. And there was participation from all three districts. It was a study group, and so, its study is complete, and it will be presented, I think, in October to the first school committee, which is Southboro, K-8.
Okay, all right. So, if any, some things that still have openings, or if anyone wants, but this is our subcommittee makeup, that would be standard. We have our school committee dates, and dates of the presentation, student advisory schedule, MASC, MASs, joint conference information, so that, if anyone is interested in signing up.
Contact Cheryl.
Contact Cheryl. We probably would have some sort of appointment of a, next month, and.
Voting delegates.
Yep. So, then we have the harbinger. And any other agendas for next month?
Just in case we can't schedule combined, and we want to go out with three separate task, you know, start time task force, you know, recommendations to the three committees, should we have it on the agenda, and if we just skip it.
Okay. Maybe we're appointing, you know, our members.
On the school committee distribution list, the combined meeting would most likely be October 24th. I think that's the one Wednesday in the month that we don't have a meeting scheduled in October. We just booked it in, so. Round out the month.
All right, so October, our meeting would be before then, so we'll just hold off on that. Then we have the boosters, club presentation, school improvement plan, and APTO presentations set for.
Next month.
Next month. And approval of, I skipped over approval of bills and payrolls, but.
They approved them.
We already did.
That's right.
Before this meeting, so that's it. And we have motion to adjourn.
So, move. Second.